We've been asked to take a card and something to write with. We take the question, we check it just really for clarity and we will get some repeat questions as well. Sometimes we find questions to try to get in as many as we can in the time allotted. And so it's very frequent that we don't get all of the questions asked and we will do our best to get as many as we can. And the, each person will get a chance to answer. So you can ask a question specifically for someone, for one person, but everybody will get a chance to answer that question as well if they wish to. So if you want to ask it for a particular person, just put that on your card. Okay?
I think we've got, got a few seconds left here. She did confirm that she was coming, that she maybe just...
Yeah, she may be just a little, maybe she can hear before it's her turn. I have six o'clock, so I'm going to go ahead and get started. My name is Barb Hedrick. I'm a co-president with, of the League of Women Voters of the Red River Valley. We thank you for attending to tonight's West Fargo School Board Voter Forum for the, before the June primary in just now, a matter of a few weeks, amazingly enough. Just a few intro things about the League of Women Voters and about the forum tonight before we get started with our candidates. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political association and encourages informed and active participation as government works to increase understanding of major public policy issues and hopes that everyone who is eligible to vote will vote in every chance they, opportunity they get. And we provide these voter forums as often as we can for the voters to get a chance to see candidates asking questions from them. The way we run this is that vote, questions have been submitted to me on cards and I will be reading those after you do your opening statements. And then each person will get a chance to answer each question. And we'll just keep going around to as many, and get as many questions as we can in our time allotted. Thanks, ahead of time, the city of West Fargo for their use of their space, the nice goodies they brought everybody, and also to the cable company for providing this on cable access. All right, so we will go ahead and get started with opening statements and we will start with Summer Christensen.
I'm Summer Christensen. I grew up in Wapton, currently live in West Fargo. I own a house in West Fargo. I'm really bad at this, I'm sorry. I went to UND and graduated from MSUM with a bachelor's degree in paralegal and I'm currently a veteran service officer for the North Dakota American Legion based at the Fargo VA here. I'm also the chairwoman for the North Dakota Department, or North Dakota American Legion's Veterans Affairs and Rehabilitation Committee, so helping with our veterans get their benefits. I'm married, met my husband when we were still in high school. We have two chi, two children. My son is currently a first grader at Eastwood Elementary and my daughter is only three, so she's not in school yet. We will be in the new Willow Park School District come this fall.
Thank you. Jeff Shirley?
Hi, I'm Jeff Shirley. I moved to West Fargo in about 1981. I lived in the city of West Fargo until 2003. Moved to Mapleton for about eight years and then moved back, and moved to Horus, or Harwood in 2010. At first was appointed to the school board in 1997. I served to, through December of 2003 when I moved away, came back at, back on the board in 2012 and served through 2016. So I've ten and a half years on the board over the course of about nineteen and a half years. In between those stints, I also served on a small town, the Mapleton City Council and was mayor there for a while, so a little bit of everything going on. I'm married, I have wife Christie who works at NDSU. I have three daughters, two of which are graduated, living out of the area. They both went to Eastwood Elementary. And I have one just finishing kindergarten and she is at Harwood. I work as a customer care coordinator in a behavioral outpatient clinic, take care of all of our new clients, do paperwork for them and take their calls.
Thank you. Alan Scramstead?
Good afternoon, good evening. Thank you all for coming. I'm Alan Scramstead and I'm a current member of the West Fargo School Board. I would like to continue for another four years because there are several challenges ahead of the school district and the city of West Fargo. During the past four years, the district population has grown by 2,000 people. And a lot of people don't realize that this coming fall, we'll have 1,000, almost 1,000 children in kindergarten. So if you followed that progress through their school careers, you'll see that when they're ready for high school, we'll be about 300 people, too many for middle school and high school, which is an astounding factor. The continued growth in the middle schools and high schools will have to be addressed. This fall, we have to move approximately 100 students from Liberty Middle School to Cheyenne High School because of the overcrowding in Liberty Middle School. There are several issues that are going to confront the school board in the upcoming months. Certainly, mental health and behavior problems is one of the biggest ones. Security is another one. So I'll say right here, right now, I do not advocate the arming of our teachers or any of the staff in the district. It's not appropriate. What we need to do is do better teaching for the teachers that are working with the students in special education and behavior problems. While I don't have any children in the district going to school, I do have 10,500 children in the district amongst all of our schools that I don't particularly look at one neighborhood. I look at the total district and the total population of the schools.
Thank you. Kara Grably-Stack?
Hi, I'm Kara. I'm currently serving as the president of the school board. A year ago, I, or last year, I was the vice president. I joined the board in 2014. My husband and I have lived in this area, well, he grew up in this area. First, we lived in Kindred and then when the first of our three children was starting school, we moved into Horus primarily because of the, the school district. We wanted our children to go to West Fargo schools. So we've been living in Horus for about 14 years, watching some of that development that I think Alan was talking about with the growth in our district. Like I said, I have three kids. They went to, obviously, Horus Elementary and they went to each of the different middle school opportunities, Chaney, the STEM Center, and then Liberty Middle School. And my oldest was in the first graduating class from Cheyenne High School and he's now at NDSU. And my daughter is graduating in two weeks and my youngest is a freshman. My background is working in higher education. I've worked in higher education for about 25 years. Currently, I'm at North Dakota State, working in our equity office, so addressing policy issues and things like that.
Thank you. John Erickson?
My name is John Erickson and I am also running for reelection. I have been on the board for four years and looking to continue to do that. Currently live in Eagle Run and been there since '05 and lived in Fargo before that. So I've certainly been in the area for a while. I do want to just take a moment and thank the League of Women Voters for being able to, the opportunity. And also thank the citizens of West Fargo for electing me four years ago and giving me this opportunity. I am looking for, to try to do it again. Couple of things about, that I've learned and kind of as I've gone over the last four years, I believe there's really one mission. And that one mission is really just to serve our kids. We want to make sure that we're going through and making the best decisions we can to serve their needs and certainly as that rapid growth continues to grow, or continues to go, those needs are going to continue to change. And some of them have already been mentioned, but they just continue to grow. So the goal on the board, of course, is to serve those kids and create those desired results as we kind of work through a lot of the different things. We want to make sure that everybody's graduating, everybody gets a good education and there's, you know, with 10,500 and growing, there's a lot of different needs and not each one of those students learn the same way. So it's really kind of pushing towards those desired results and creating that one mission to be able to do that. Along with kind of the three goals on the strategic plan, I always kind of like to be able to work through that and it's, we want those students engaged, empowered, and then, you know, we want graduate ready. And that certainly can mean many different things also. So that's, I'll kind of leave with that. I do want to make sure, let you know that it is personal because I do have two daughters. One is going into Liberty next year, right in the middle of the height, and the other one is going to Cheyenne. So besides the fact, and as Al said, we have 10,500 kids, we have two of our own going through it.
Thank you. Jessica Heilmann?
Okay, I'm new to the table, so I'm going to give you just a quick little background of myself. I'm born and raised in West Fargo. I have two children. I have Logan, he is a sixth grader at Cheney, and I have Ella and she's a fifth grader at Harwood. I graduated, like I said, through West Fargo, born and raised, went through the whole school system. I, little background on my, on my education, I have my bachelor's in child and family studies and minor in communications from Concordia College. And I have a master's in human development and family science from NDSU where I studied more the family business dynamic. And I'm currently working as a commercial quality analyst at Bell Bank. I have served five years on the Harwood PTO. I did two years as treasurer and three years as president. I have literally witnessed the growth of West Fargo, not only the city and the growth, but the change in the student dynamics for almost 30 years. And it's, it's just, it's quite unprecedented. I knew from a young age, when my kids were in preschool, I wanted to get involved, just even reading the, the board minutes from our Harwood PTO meetings from there. And so I did. And so I've got five years of that. It's been one of the best experiences of my life. And I'm here today to continue that because I am that passionate about education and children's educational development across the board.
Thank you. Barry Miller?
Thank you. Welcome, everyone, and I want to thank you for having this forum for us. My name is Barry Miller. I moved to West Fargo in around 2000, originally from Washburn, North Dakota. Got a bachelor's degree from Minut State University and I'm currently a small business owner, have my own tax and accounting business. As I said, I've been in West Fargo since 2001. As somebody who's not served on the board, I'm not going to spew out numbers because I don't have that luxury to be able to know those numbers. Not from lack of trying. I've tried to be on committees. Unfortunately, the current makeup of the board and some of the members, they want the same people all the time. They don't want opposing viewpoints, they don't want other people to give their input. I have tried, so I'm running, because I honestly feel there are people that are being excluded, voices that are not being heard. And I think it's time for new vision, new leadership, and new ideas. Not saying that we don't need to continue the growth of what we're doing, but maybe we need to look at things a different way. If my ideas, if I'm wrong in my thinking and not being included, then include me, tell me why I'm wrong. Show me why I'm wrong. But by excluding people and not listening to the taxpayers, I think you're doing a disservice to the students and to the people that pay the bills. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Jonas?
Good evening. Thank you for coming tonight and thank you to the League of Women for putting this on tonight. I'm Jonas. I'm a retired teacher and coach here from West Fargo. I spent my first three years in Minut and, at Minut High and Minut Ryan. Then I moved down here in 1989, ninety or so, and I spent 27 years here in West Fargo. So I literally have 10,000 kids here that have, I've taught and coached throughout my career here. It's a wonderful place to be. Our schools are fantastic, great teachers, some of the finest, most dedicated people I had an opportunity to work with, our teachers and our staff. So students, it's such a quality education we're providing here. The feedback I get from students who left and went on to college or careers just came back and said they were really well-prepared for their college classes and they really thanked the teachers at the, at the school system. So I'm running for the board, I'm an advocate for students. Everything I do will be to put the students first, whether it be facilities, curriculum, how's it going to affect them? And then I'll research in, I'll need input from teachers, administrators, fellow board members. I'm really good at developing relationships. And what I will bring of the institutional knowledge that I have is my background as a teacher in the school system here. I'm proven and dead, my, I'm proven and dedicated to the students already, my, during my coaching and teaching career here. So I'm excited to work with you guys to further the district and do things for our kids. So thank you.
Thank you. Matur Elir?
Thank you to vote, to the League of Women Voters. My name is Matur Elir. I was born in South Sudan, that's in East Africa, during the civil war there. At age seven, I moved to a refugee camp. I did 10 years there before I was sponsored by a Lutheran church right outside Philadelphia. I came to America in 2006, not knowing anybody, not knowing any language, but I rely on the best teachers and best schools to get me to where I am today. I was able to graduate at public high school there, called Phoenixville Area High School. I went on to Penn State University and graduated with the bachelor's in biology and with 4.0. I moved to Fargo here. I met my wife in Texas and we moved here. We have children and my brother was living here and he was having a hard time, so we moved here and, and adopted this kid too. So I have seven children. I have four of my own, three of my brothers, and they go to Legacy and I have little children that will be going there too. I volunteer as the South Sudan Lutheran After School Program, teaching children and children English as second language. I also volunteer with Fargo High School to help the student in need. The reason I'm running is I want to ensure that all students have what they need to learn, all teachers have what they need to support and teach our students, and I want all parents to feel engaged in their children's education. As you can see, coming to this country not knowing any language and try to compete in everything, I want to share my talent with all of you in West Fargo. I want to share my time and energy to give back to the community that have done so much for me. So thanks for having me here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Shelley, is it Try or Tree? Tribe?
Thank you for having me and I apologize for being tardy. I was helping my child with his science project, so I guess that's still no excuse. My name is Shelley Tribe. I have two children in, one in Cheyenne and one in Liberty, which will be going to Cheyenne next year and he, my eldest one will be a senior. I want to work with the, be on the school board for the fact that I want to work with the teachers. I want to make sure that the students are known, what they need, what the teachers are needing, how things are, how we need to eliminate the overcrowding. As of now, we've heard that there will be eighth graders being moved over to Cheyenne because Liberty is full again. So we need to make sure this isn't happening and continually happening and if we have to get another middle school in, another high school. We need to assist in making sure that our monies are spent correctly and on necessary projects, not on wasteful spending. We also need to look at our school lunches. The lunches that the children are being served today are more, no more than going to McDonald's as a fast food. They're meeting their caloric intakes, but they're not nutritious. They're not healthy for the athletes. Currently, I go, my children will do one to two to three lunches a day because to fill them up as an athlete, one meal isn't enough. So we're spending major amounts of money, you know, between four and eight dollars a day just for them to get enough food, to keep them energized for the day to compete in their athletes, athletics at the end of the day or during the evening. I think I could bring a lot to the board. I am an accountant. I understand financials. I also have a master's in management. I think it would help a lot to be able to understand things and I think I'd be a very big asset for the school board.
Thank you. Before we get to our first question, one of your fellow candidates could not be here today, but he did ask us to read the statement. This is from candidate Ben Haney. First of all, thank you to the League of Women Voters for coordinating this event. Events that allow for voters to become more informed are invaluable for democracy. I apologize I wasn't able to make this event. I had a pre-arranged short-term trip to study abroad through NDSU and won't be back until tomorrow. I am someone that benefited greatly through public education. My second grade teacher approached my parents about a concern that something seemed a little off. I was diagnosed with ADHD and autism. I received an IEP and had teachers that helped me work through my challenges. I have my degree in mass communications and now attend NDSU for my history and political science degrees. I understand how open communication and having the right staff truly make a, makes a difference in the life of a child. My vision for the West Fargo School Board is, one, supporting our educators by making sure they are given the tools and development they need while being compensated fairly; two, establishing policies that focus on a well-rounded education. We do this by avoiding a one-size-fits-all approach. We also need to focus on one whole child development by not only focusing on academics, but physical, social, and emotional well-being. Three, building 21st century learning spaces that allow for multiple instructional methods and learning styles while promoting creativity and students' success. Please feel free to visit my website at www.votbenhaney.org to learn more about me. I also will be posting my answers to the questions that are asked here tonight within a couple of days. I appreciate your support ahead of time and ask you for your vote on June 12th. Ben Haney. So right away, we're going to go to, question would start with Jeff and some of you already answered a bit of this, but multiple people are asking sort of similar questions about what do you see as your major reason for running for school board? And specifically, what are your particular goals or priorities if you would become a member of the school board over the next four years? Sorry, you only got one minute.
All right. So in 2016, I lost an election. If you've been through an election before and lost, you know it feels like sudden death. We were in the middle of a lot of issues that were being discussed at the time, including growth, which is an ongoing discussion here. I didn't feel like I was done yet. I thought I had some more energy in me to continue on with the school board, to continue to help, to help with the rest of the board to balance out the district's needs and also try to weigh them. I think we were a good functioning working board at the time. One of the, that's one of the greatest issues right now is growth, that's one of the main talking points that I hear all the time, that there are a lot of other things that are going on. Another issue that right now, that's important right now, is the fact that not only West Fargo, but other districts in the area are just getting their brand-new superintendents ready to roll by July 1. To me, it's very important that the board remains stable during that time. We adopted, I was part of adopting a coherent governance model. We've also made sure that that has been, you know, followed very closely. We try not to sway from that and want to make sure that the new superintendent can come in and be successful by having a steady, stable board that knows kind of the ropes and what is expected of her. That would give her a chance to excel actually in the same culture that she was groomed.
Thank you. Alan?
The major reasons I'm looking at running for the school board is to try and provide continuity and consistency to building what's happened over the last several years. There's been two bond referendums since 2011. We've added a number of schools. We've added a number of students to our district. There are a lot of districts in this state that would like to have 400 students in their school, let alone 400 students a year. So we have to try and accommodate that growth and basically it's a building at a time. It would be neat if those 400 students went to one building, but they're scattered throughout the district. Continuing with other reasons, building security, mental health, and behavior issues face the district as well as our neighboring district to the east. Security, now over the last couple of years, the district has committed through grants and money from the district, $1,400,000.
Thank you. Kara?
I think a major reason for me in running is very similar to the, one of the reasons that I ran in 2014 also. I mentioned in my introduction that I've, my career has been in higher education and in that role, I have seen a lot of the challenges that our new college students are facing, maybe through challenges in preparation in, in the K-12 system. And I know not, that not all of our graduates are bound for college or university, but for those who are, I think that I'm able to bring that kind of perspective of what is needed to be able to be successful. I'm also, in my career, but personally, very concerned about making sure that our educational environments are appropriate and fully inclusive for our diverse students as we have more and more diversity coming into the district. I think that's critically important. Others have mentioned growth. I also would mention as a priority, school safety. I think that's abundantly clear to most people. And part of that, part of that relies on mental health, making sure that we have mental health covered.
Thank you. John?
For the mic, the biggest thing, of course, is growth. And of course, with that growth, it comes a lot of those different things with the security, new buildings, supplying the appropriate buildings and of course being fiscal, fiscally responsible and being able to accommodate that and how we are going to plan that. And it also on the, besides just working on the different growth and all the other things that have been said, we also want to continue working with the state and make sure that we get on-time funding. That on-time funding, we've been funded one year behind and that really makes it difficult to try to, you know, keep moving forward, especially with additional, you know, 400 to 500 students a year. So that's just an ongoing thing and hopefully, if we make it in the next four years, we can convince the legislature to come up with some formula to be able to kind of wreck that and get it back to where it should be.
Thank you. Jessica?
Okay. I mentioned in my opening, opening statement, basically, I'm running for school board because I'm passionate about kids and I'm passionate about education and I feel that the public school district has a role to equip our children for the 21st century skills that they need to go forth into society. So whether that be post-secondary education, whether that be the workplace, whether it be career readiness, however that may be. My goals are to address school equity, execute and address school safety measures and children's mental health and the increasing student behavior, maintain adequate class size amongst growth in the district, and also to enhance collaboration between teachers, staff, administration, and the school board.
Thank you. Barry?
I see the value in a good quality education, but in my mind, a quality education doesn't necessarily mean spending more money and build, build, build. We need to find other ways to get the students the means and support that they need to be able to fully develop the way they should. In my mind, there's three stakeholders in this and just lately, in the last, since 2011, I think the third stakeholder has been excluded and that's the taxpayers. The taxpayers are saying enough. We need to find other ways other than build and spend money. We don't need to build these masterpieces to architects. I remember going to a, to a meeting one time, when I was included one time, this person stood up and she said, "Well, I took my daughter from Chaney and I took her to the STEM Center." And I was so disappointed, I drove up there and the building looked so rundown, there was no windows. And I looked at her and I said, "That's the problem. You care more about what a building looks on the outside than what's being taught on the inside." I think it's time, we taught, we hear fiscal responsibility from some current board members. I honestly haven't seen any in the last few years. I'm running to change that. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim?
Thank you. Well, once again, the main reason I am running is for the kids. The kids, I want the district to be able to offer the best curriculum possible. We want AP classes for those that are, that are excelling, dual credit classes, more, more resources for the gifted and talented students at the elementary level. And then I want the resources also for the teachers. We've got to stay... We've got to stay on top of technology. Technology is a vital part for our teachers, our students, it personalizes learning. We want to make sure they have the best possible equipment they can use. I, too, am concerned about the mental health of students with our Level D proposal going on. I'd like to see it done, but in a good way. I'm glad that they slowed it down, slowed it down, and let's take some time out and get the adequate environment, the resources needed for these students. All kids matter. All kids matter, so we've got to make sure they get a good education so they can learn their coping skills and get back into the regular classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you. Matur?
Okay. I'm running to ensure that all students have what they need to learn, all the parents still engage in their children's indication, and to make sure that teachers have what they need to teach the students and support them. I run after school program, and I tutor students almost every five days a week, and that's the volunteer work facilitating for New American, and everybody is welcome to join that program. And I feel like the school is doing a great job by building new buildings every year, but I feel there's a need to teach the children within the school. I'm not sure if that's the board work, but getting in there will pass a good message, and that's why I am running. I'm running to, I care about the children, the city I live in. I'm a homeowner in the district, and I have children that will be going to that school. And I feel like there's a need to give back to the community. I have the talent to make that happen, and if I get elected, that will happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Shelley?
I want to serve on the West Fargo School Board as an advocate for both the student population as well as for the teaching staff, as they are the ones that are developing the minds of our future generations. My goals are to ensure our money is spent on necessary programs and expenditures, to ensure the West Fargo Public Schools meet the requirements for class size in every classroom, and ensure that school lunches are healthy as well as meeting the required nutrition for mind and body.
Thank you. Summer?
My main reason for running for the West Fargo School Board is the mental health of our children. I have personally seen where West Fargo does lack in helping our students with their mental health when they go through anything that can be traumatic, or just the growth and having the diversity, that's a big deal when you're looking at schools. Another big reason I'm running is I want to help form a community partnership with our West Fargo Schools and the West Fargo community. Getting kids involved in the community will help keep kids here and be able to continue to grow our community. We don't want our children moving away. We want them to stay here and see that they are a valued part of our community and that they're valued in this community versus moving to Texas or some other state that isn't as awesome as North Dakota, even if we do have great winners. So, that is, my main reason for running is the mental health and our community partnerships.
All right. Thank you. Alan, we'll start with you with this question. What are your ideas of how to improve and to continue to keep schools safe? What are your ideas on how to improve and continue to keep schools safe?
How to improve and keep schools safe? Well, the West Fargo School District has did a lot of things in providing security through access to the buildings. There's a lot more to be done. As I stated earlier, I'm not an advocate of arming our teachers and faculty, but we do need to spend more time and effort into recognizing mental health issues and behavior problems in the students that are going to our classrooms and that. I think there have been plenty of examples that have been amplified in the newspaper that tells us that there is a problem. We have to address it from the administration to the faculty and the board to keep all our children safe.
Kara?
Like Alan said, I think we have been doing some really good things with that. I, too, do not support arming teachers. I know after the Parkland shooting, I got a number of emails from teachers asking and essentially begging, "Please do not vote to have us armed in the schools," and I think that's something that most of us who are currently on the board are in agreement about. I do think we could work to potentially increase the number of school resource officers that are available in the schools. I think we also need to think about how we're staffing our counselors, and maybe if we can increase the number of counselors so that each counselor is working with a more reasonable number of students. I think they're working with between 300 and 400 students in the high schools and the middle schools. We need to make sure we're addressing bullying, but also social skills. I think students need continued work on how to resolve conflicts between each other in appropriate and positive ways. And again, of course, mental health issues need to be addressed as well.
Thank you. John?
School safety, I think West Fargo is kind of ahead of the game. I think we've done quite well, at least at our buildings, and especially when we've had the opportunity to build so many new buildings. We've incorporated, you know, the access is always going through the office, and we have the lobby guards and most of it. So, physically, I think we're doing pretty well. We don't have all schools there yet. We are looking to do that. There's the other aspect of the SROs, and I think trying to just get into the community of the schools and really get to know those, because I think there's a lot of going on within the schools, bullying with the social side of things. I think there's a lot there that we can kind of expand on. I don't have the answers on how to do that, but I think there's a lot of different ways that we can continue to explore. I know the board goes to different studies and so on, and we go to the national events and some of the different areas to try to explore how other areas have done it. And so, hopefully, we can get some ideas to continue to build that, but more students. But I think it's really just opening that communication up with the student body in as many different ways as we can.
Jessica?
All right. I also agree that the safety measures that have been implemented in schools have been actually quite fantastic, as far as the limiting ability for students to come and go in between in halls and also people to enter and exit, enter schools most of the time. The school resource officers, as far as implementing them in schools, have been awesome. It's been an absolute success at Harwood, so I can attest to that in particular. And I'm also not an advocate for arming teachers and staff, but I do firmly believe that we need to give them the tools and resources necessary to deal with the escalating behavior of children in these cases. And I think one of the fundamental questions is, what is going on at the cultural level as far as, why are we seeing these increases where we need to even address school safety at this point and escalating levels that we have seen?
Thank you. Barry?
We'll have to agree that the school board and the school district has improved some security. I do have a godson that goes to Ellie Burger, and I've, over the years he's been there, I've noticed the increase in everything. So, they have done stuff. It's got a lot more to do, so it's no fault of the board on that issue. There are issues that we, as a society, need to address, and I think it's bullying, mental health, and some of it starts at home. Parents need to teach their children right and wrong at home, and don't just bring them to school and expect the teachers and the parents and the sports staff to deal with that. But I do think that if it came down to it, I'm on the fence on arming people, but I don't think a board of seven should decide if the community wanted to go that way. I think if it came down to that, the community should have a say. Thank you.
Jim?
Okay, yeah. Well, West Fargo is ahead of the game in terms of school security. I had a good lunch with Todd Pearson the other day, and we talked about it, and some things that he sees in our older buildings need better fortifications, such as lock mechanisms for the doors, the film for the windows, and we also need to get more, he would like several more SROs as possible. And with security comes, upgrades in security comes an upgrade in finances. That's one of the things that the district will have to deal with. But we, too, must deal with the mental health issues. We need more counselors. Legally, I believe it's, we have to have a counselor for one counselor for every 300 students, so we've got to make sure we're ahead of the game on that. And we need the wraparound services, more social workers, psychologists, but we have to have these kids feel welcomed. Sometimes, that's the best part of their day is when they go to school and they see their friends and so forth. It takes a community effort, because sometimes, things aren't too good at home. And many times, I saw the instances where we had to step in as a district to help kids out.
Thank you. Matur?
We need policies in place for staff and students, hiring more resources, school resource officers would be great for our district if there's the need for that. There are need for technology, having cameras at a school door buzzing in every visitor at the school. Safety also related to promoting mental and physical well-being for all students. So, I don't support arming teachers, and I believe that the teachers do a great job by dealing with our children. We don't want to make them guard, too, and that's where I stand. Thank you.
Shelley?
I believe we need to set up a better communication system. Communication is vital in any crisis situation. We also need to improve student relationships to prevent violence, drugs, teen pregnancies, bullying, and any mental health issues. We need to show the students that we care. This has to start, not just in the schools, but the parents have to start regarding children and what is going on, and believe that they are the start to where this is, and it doesn't depend on the teacher, to discipline the children, to make them understand that bullying is not right. Social media has become so big nowadays that it, cyberbullying is even more than the physical bullying that is out there. We need the communication going around that needs to be talked about more often so that they understand that there's somebody there who can help them. Thank you.
Summer?
So, having teachers be able to see the issues with our mental health within our children, I think would start stopping a lot of the issues that we're seeing when most of your, especially, school shootings are coming from kids within. When you're looking at arming our teachers, and this might not be the most popular opinion, I work at a building where we are not allowed to have weapons for any rhyme or reason, and we work with some people that aren't always the most sound of mind. And I think giving our teachers an option, not a requirement, but an option, if they want to do that, I think they should be allowed to. We don't get that option in my job, and I find that very difficult when you're faced with these situations, what do you do? And it's so easy to look back and be like, "Well, we could have done this, we could have done that, but we could have stopped it." I think our SROs are a great resource to have in every school, but they can't see it all. They're one person, maybe two people in all bigger our schools. They're fairly large schools, and they need to be able to, you know, assist themselves and help get the classrooms locked down as well. Thank you.
Jeff?
Since Columbine, I've worked with the West Fargo Schools, so I've been involved with a lot of security upgrades over the years. We've made a lot of headway over time. I know there's still a lot to do. I know there's still buildings that we need to work on. A lot of the infrastructure changes have happened through grant money, when that's available. It's also come out of our budget as well, but it is expensive to get them to the point where we need them to be and we feel that we're done. I don't know if we'll ever feel that we're done. One of the biggest advances in our area in general is the schools, all the schools in the area work with the, I never get the acronym right, it's the Cass-Clay County Unified School Response Method, and that is, means that we're all using a unified way to address an active shooter. I would never support teachers being armed unless they were clamoring for that, and someone has given me the numbers of how that would affect their salary and benefits.
Thank you. I've got four different questions related in some way or another to building, so we'll start going through these now. We'll start with Kara. Do you believe in neighborhood schools at the elementary level, and if so, why or why not?
Yes, I do. I think that those help, well, there's a lot of reasons for it. Some of them are logistical. We would like to be able to support having students walk to school if they live less than a mile away, and there's no major roads there, so logistically, that's huge. That has a huge impact on our cost for busing students. We also think, and I know this is something that has come up in the Fargo School District, that that helps build community and it keeps communities vibrant. I don't know that being vibrant is as much an issue for us with the growth that we're having, but I think that it helps communities to come together. I think that we have seen families really appreciate and choose to live in certain neighborhoods because there are schools there. So, yes, I support that at the elementary level, definitely.
John?
I also support that. I think it's really great to have, you know, that kindergarten through fifth grade and really seeing, my youngest daughter is currently in fifth grade, and now seeing that going through and having them go, it's great to have siblings in those neighborhood schools and they can relate up to the grades, and I was always amazed on how even in fifth grade, they knew a lot of the first graders and so on, even if they weren't, they knew friends of each other. So, it really builds that neighborhood school. They get to know the whole neighborhood, and that's really what, you know, one of the goals that we were going along with, being able to have the siblings, you know, continue with them. And I think just the cohesiveness of it across the, so we don't have one school that's, you know, first through, just first grade, second grade, or if we have different schools that are different tracks, you know, number of different levels through that. If we have all the schools the same, I think that certainly benefits the district, too.
Thank you. Jessica?
I am also in favor of neighborhood schools. I believe that's where communities revolve around our school, our elementary schools, and it's where people come together, it's where they form relationships, it's where our children and families get to know the teachers and the community. And I was very pleased that we brought kindergarten back into the elementary school as well.
Barry?
I don't believe in neighborhood schools. I don't think we need all these schools. We need schools. We need fewer, but larger schools. Every time we take land off the tax rolls, that's more that the taxpayers have to pick up. And if these people, if I looked across here, how many people would want neighborhood schools? A lot of them. Well, here's a unique idea. Why don't we use the cost-benefit ratio they use on special assessments? You benefit from the neighborhood school, you pay a little bit more. You know, now, that's not going to be popular at all, and that is a little bit of sarcasm, but I don't believe we need to have neighborhood schools, because when you build all these schools, it costs more money for staffing, it costs more custodial. It's just an additional cost that takes away from the education. So, I don't believe in neighborhood schools.
Thank you. Jim?
I think neighborhood schools are wonderful. They're the center of the neighborhood, the community, they're vibrant places. I don't think educating our kids is not a savings plan, but it's an investment. So, I love that we've just opened up Brooks Harbor, Willow Creek next year, and then Deer Creek, did we just break ground yesterday? We're a vibrant, growing community, and these schools are necessary. I look back at my days, I enjoy every time I go back home to Devil's Lake. One of the first things I do is I love to run around the old elementary school. So, I think West Fargo's done a fantastic job of keeping it of the game, so I'm all for it.
Matur?
Yeah. I'm not really sure about this question, but it's something I would like to look into taxes, how much they will cost. Second of it, I will look into the population of the area. So, if there are like five students there, I don't think there's the need of building a school into that, but I would support to have my own school, my own house, if I have the money. But neighborhood schools are great to have according to the population and the taxpayer's money, if they are able to.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Shelley.
I agree. I support neighborhood schools. I went to one of, or my children went to one of the older schools, and we currently moved in, Brooks Harbor's opened up, and just having that as close as it is and seeing all the children that go around and how many are around, around to see, playing with each other, they all have friends that are going to the same area. So, then, when they are moved out to a middle school, they have their friends that are still going, even though they will get other friends from other areas. The neighborhood school for elementary is a great idea, great for the student population to get to know each other, families to get to know each other, so that the neighborhoods grow and everything becomes, in essence, safer for them all at once. Thank you.
Summer?
I support our neighborhood schools because I feel that your elementary schools shouldn't be jam-packed with kids. They're hard enough to keep track of all these, like, little five-to-eight-year-olds springing around like little chickens. Having a smaller school and having where people know everybody is helpful. I just went on the Eastwood First Grade Field Trip down to the Waukton Zoo, and trying to keep track of all these kids is really difficult, but when we came back and you have some of these older kids that know your kids, even though they don't, I don't know who any of these kids are, my kids don't have older siblings, it's nice. It's nice to see how everybody works together. We had a kid on the bus that is so excited that he learned that my son lives, basically, they're neighbors. They're in the apartment right next to us, and now they get to play all summer long and they get to go to this brand-new school next year together. And it's not as scary when you're looking at, this will be their third school in the first three years of their lives.
Jeff?
I also support neighborhood schools for a few different reasons. One is that is personal. I, that's just a belief that I have, the community of it, the community sense of it. But the other piece is that each time that an elementary school has been built in the Westfargo School District, it's the taxpayers and the voters who have indicated that that is what they want and that is what they received. The question comes up every time. Do we make this bigger? Do we expand some that we have, or do we build a smaller one and keep a certain size? And I think the range was somewhere around six hundred at one point was probably the number that was, seemed to have been agreed upon between the local folks who are stakeholders and also the long-range facilities planning committees that have been put together who speak for several different parts of our community. That's been the same outcome.
Alan?
I also am an advocate for neighborhood schools. And I think back, it wasn't that long ago that our youngest children, the kindergarten children, were bussed the longest to get to school. From down south to Osgood Kindergarten Center, up north to the Liddone Kindergarten Center. And this wasn't advantageous for their growth in school. So, instead of transferring to another school after kindergarten, they were able to, neighborhood school K through five, which would provide them continuity and consistency in their education.
Thank you. Now, a new question. Somebody has a question about a suggestion about how the schools should be built. Can schools be built so that they can be added on to in future years? Why not do that? And John, you're the first one.
Really, we do, or we have, I can speak a little experience in it. We have continued to build those schools and build them to the appropriate size. As Jeff, Jeff mentioned, we kind of looked through and through a variety of different studies that of course the administration helped us and so on and looking at different research. Kind of that good, or the best size, the study said the best size was like that five fifty to six hundred. And so, for example, Brooks Harbor, we did build. That's only, three-track is three wing. And so, if you have different wings in there, we've built that one three-track so we can add a fourth as that neighborhood grows. And currently, we would even be looking at, if we were looking at the bond at middle school and high school, we would certainly look to build a certain size and build it so we can add on. So, the answer to the question is yes, we do build all schools, but we can add on where there's room. And, but ultimately, we do kind of have that perfect school environment that we'd like to set up. For example, like Willow Park is where you go through, that's a full-size four-track school and it's a little larger to help with a welcome center. So, we're trying to use, as we're developing new areas, we're trying to use that the best we can for new needs, along with continuing to repurpose the Liddone Center for early childhood and so on. I just saw the stop, so.
Jessica?
All right. So, I would agree. I think that's definitely been looked at as far as there's been feasibility studies done. I don't think the decisions as far as whether we build a new school, whether we add on are made without that information there. I do believe they have been. I think that as far as building new schools, it's been, it's preserving the neighborhood school concept that has been proven, data says, is, it facilitates children's educational development. And so, as far as the question of can we add on to schools? Can we, you know, kind of have a glass ball sometimes too as far as to predict what the growth is going to be? I think everyone would like to be able to know what that is, but, but we don't. And that's been one of the biggest challenges of the district is it's, it's so hard to predict where, what it's going to be. I think you can get a general idea, but you just don't know.
Barry?
I think it's important if we build, we look at being able to add on. And I look at West Fargo High added on older school. Ellie Burger added on older school. The concept was there. I'm afraid the concept may have gone away with this newer stuff because we want neighborhood schools. We did it before. We found room to add on. Now, the kids at Ellie Burger don't like that part of their playground is taken. I hear that every once in a while. But we have, do have some schools out there. And I think when we build, and I don't think we should even think about a bond referendum until after the election. Let the new board decide. Don't push Dr. Flowers' agenda through one more time. But I think we do have some structures that can be done and every new structure, if we build, should have that concept, or at least that idea.
Jim?
Yeah, in my career at West Fargo, at West Fargo High School, I believe we've added on three times since I've been here. And additions to Burger and so forth. So, some of the older schools, we did add on as, as the need came. But as, with the explosion of students coming into the district, with the new buildings and so forth, I do see that the need for schools to be planned in case of enrollment. I think the enrollment, I saw a study that we're going to peak supposedly around twenty twenty-four, around fifteen thousand students. I think we're going to start to get landlocked here with our district and so forth. So, we do need the ability to add on to some of the, maybe some of the newer elementaries. And also, they are adding on, I think currently, after performance wings, academic theater wings being on, added on to some of our schools. So, I think the board's done a good job on that. Thank you.
Matour?
Yeah, I would support that, especially with the new buildings and to build them with the room to update them if there's a need to be. And we also need to update the old schools, not having these children going to the newer school that have air conditions and everything that work fine and update the new ones to work or to keep up with the new school would be great too. So, I would support that.
Shelley?
I believe that, yeah, if, if it's a possibility to build on and add on to a school, that would be a great suggestion. However, there are schools that there isn't the possibility of building on to. Just for instance, Cheyenne, you can't build on, we can't build up, we're landlocked, there's nowhere to go. So, there does need to be schools built as, in a new high school because of the growth is coming, going out towards the south. We need to make sure that our student population has the ability to not be overcrowded and are getting the teaching and learning and being successful in the future. So, if there's the possibility to add on, that would be the best idea. But if, in, in the long run, there are areas that there's no place to add on, so we just have to build. Thank you.
Summer?
I also agree that if we are able to add on to some of our schools, by all means, add on. But like Barry said, when you have, take away somebody's, like kids' playgrounds, that's their outlet to get out and run off energy and give the teachers a little bit of, just kind of a mental break of getting away from kids. So, when you're building on and taking away the only thing the kids have, that doesn't work either. So, then we do need to look at building school, building new schools so that we don't take away all of their outside time, all of our teacher and staff parking. When parents come to schools, where do you park? When the parking lots are only big enough for the staff that are there and looking, so I agree with them.
Jeff?
Oh, yes. Schools can be added on to in most cases. Most have been. There's one that has not yet, one of the older variety, and that is Harwood. Harwood, there's possible, we're looking at that. There's been looking at that discussion about adding classrooms there. There is space. There are the landlocked ones, of course, where that's not going to happen any longer. But, and as far as the newer schools, I can assure you that the thought about adding on to the newer design has been already in some architects' head. It's been talked about in various meetings over time. The pattern being used now is pretty much repeated over and over again with some changes to make each one unique. But it can be done and it should be where necessary, especially to find equity between all the buildings.
Alan?
I think that the administration and the school board is doing their due diligence and looking at wherever it's possible to add on, add on will be considered. I take a look at Cheyenne, which started out as the ninth-grade center, and it was converted to a high school by adding on to it. I look at Horace, and I'm not sure if we're going through our second or third add-on for Horace Elementary because of the growth in the south part of the district. I also travel Cheyenne Street two to three times a week. And I remember when we were thinking about Brooks Harbor, would we have the population to fill it? And, you know, right now, it's at that point. And I look west of Brooks Harbor and west of the diversion and all that development that's going on out there. Not all of them are going to have small children, but the potential exists that Brooks Harbor will have to be added on to. Freedom may have to be added on to. So, wherever possible, the district will consider adding on.
Thank you. Now, we've got another question. This one-
Can I answer that one too?
Oh, sorry, Cara.
No, that's okay. I got my notes here, so I'm all ready. I know that, I think a lot of really great points have been brought up and I agree with a lot of that. We have been adding on. I know there are concerns about being fiscally responsible and I think that the Brooks Harbor School is an example of that. We could have built that out to be the full four-track school like John had talked about. But we, in the interest of being fiscally responsible and looking at demographics, we specifically made the decision to make it a three-track school, knowing that it was designed so that it could be added on to when there is a need. And a lot of that revolves around us looking very carefully at the demographics and the projected demographics coming up down the road like, like Jim was talking about. Another piece with the adding on is it's important for us to make sure we're maintaining equity between newer schools and older schools. We want to, all of our schools are air-conditioned. We want to make sure that all of our schools have the same kinds of spaces. So, we are adding on some performance spaces at Cheney Middle School because Liberty Middle School has them and Cheney does not. So, that's another piece of it, is making sure that we're not building new schools that have amenities we're not able to provide in the older schools.
Okay. We're running, actually, we only have half an hour left and that includes a closing statement. So, I'm going to combine some questions here. So, you may want to scribble some notes here as I go through these. Do you favor collaboration between West Fargo and Fargo, including schools merging into one district? What is your opinion of the current board considering a bond referendum? And do you think cities will be reassessing property soon to raise more money for schools? And Jessica, you get to start the multi-faceted question. The last, the last one is, do you think the city will be reassessing our property to get more money for schools? How about I give you a minute and a half for that one?
Do I favor collaboration between Fargo and West Fargo? Do I favor joining and becoming one school district? No, I do not. I think that both school districts serve their purpose. I think that there are areas in Fargo, there are areas in West Fargo, we have our own community needs. And I am in favor of that. However, I do support collaboration in other areas. However, that may be. I know the F5 school that was currently discussed is an, is an example. But I think there are other areas of opportunity too that the school can, that the two districts can collaborate on. Do I support a new bond referendum? I do support a new bond referendum. I recall back when the very first one came on the ballot and I wasn't interviewed by the forum if I supported it, and I did at the time. West Fargo is a growing community and it is what it is. It's, there's growth and I do support it. And will the city assess our property taxes? Not necessarily. I think that that's going to up the discussion at this point.
Thank you, Barry?
Thank you. Collaboration between Fargo and West Fargo, I think, would be a good idea. I grew up in a small town where we had one town that was thirteen miles away, one was fourteen miles away, and we were rivals. We just did not like each other. Well, you know, later on, they realized the money they could save by sharing administrative staff. So, they got one superintendent and that worked out great. They shared. So, the collaboration can be there. Each school has its own school and each school has its own identity. But there are areas that were shared that saved the taxpayers and those three districts money. If we can save money, we should by all means look at it. As far as the bond referendum, I'm up in the air on that. But I strongly encourage this board not to take a vote, and it sounds like they might next time, until the new board is seated. There's a potential for change there. There's a potential for new ideas. I understand the need to rush it so that they can do it again when it gets voted down in April. I think that's wrong. Why not go November? Why make taxpayers pay more money by getting our own special vote when it could possibly be held in November? As far as the city raising taxes or assessing houses, it's my understanding that according to the people I talked with the city, they're required by law to keep them in a certain value. So, if your, if your neighbor sells his home, you can be darn sure that they're going to reassess yours. Thank you.
Jim?
Okay, I do feel we can work with Fargo in terms of some facilities, like the Level D facility because of the number of kids that would be sent to this. We could save some costs there. We need to be separate districts. Our identity is West Fargo. I'm a lifelong Packer. It'd be hard to see that occur. But I think the separate districts there, but we can save costs like whenever possible. The bond referendum coming up, this will be our third one, I think, since two thousand, it was two thousand and eleven and two thousand and fifteen. So, with the explosion down south, the growth down south, we do need that third high school. I believe Cheyenne and West Fargo, within three years, will be at capacity at thirty-one hundred students. Liberty Middle School has already had capacity and Cheney is soon to be there and with the growth. So, hopefully, we can get that third, that third high school and that third middle school. And then by twenty twenty-four, like we said, if enrollment does level off. Now, in terms of the bond and property taxing and so forth, I believe Mark Lemore said we could build for about a bond for somewhere around a hundred million dollars before it would affect our tax base, our property values. So, it'll be interesting to see what the board will come up with as a price tag. So, I think Mark said that we have paid off some debt, some debt's been paid off and we have some money left in the, in the general fund. So, I would support the bond and, yep. Thank you.
Matour?
I support working with Fargo High School but not combining two districts into one because there's a reason why they were not one in the first place. And I love West Fargo and I want to keep it separate from Fargo to that one. And for the bond referendum, I support that. I think there's the need for it. And for the reassessing of the tax, I'm not sure about that one. I think I want to keep it the way it is right now. That's where I would stand. Thank you.
Shelley?
As for collaborating with Fargo and West Fargo, in certain areas, I think it would be fine. But as Jim and everyone else has said, West Fargo is its own. We want to keep it as its own. Yes, we have two schools, two high schools now, and we are super rivals between the Mustangs and the Packers. And we add a third one in, it's going to be the same way. There will be a three-way split there. As for the referendum, the bond, we do need this. We need to add that third high school and third middle school. As I explained in my opening statement, Liberty is now sending eighth graders over to the high school this next year because they do not have enough room. So, we do need to get this bond referendum going and get this new middle school and high school. As for the taxes, it's inedible, but all, no matter what, we're going to get assessed taxes. The taxes are going to go up because your houses go up. It doesn't matter. It's not going to matter if we fund a new school or not. The taxes are just the taxes. Thank you.
Summer?
As for the collaboration between West Fargo and Fargo, I agree with basically everybody else up here. West Fargo is its own community. We don't need to be combining completely with Fargo. Now, when you are looking at something like this school idea that they had come up with, when you don't have that many people, it's not a bad idea to look at collaborating. to look at collaborating together for certain projects, just not every project. Bond referendum, it is inevitable. We're going to need new schools. Just watching the growth from the few years that I've lived in West Fargo, I can see that we're going to end up needing yet another high school and another middle school before the time that my kids even reach those grades. Reassessing property taxes, like Shelley said, it's a fact of life. Like, there's no point in arguing it. It's going to happen because it's just the world we live in.
Jim?
As far as merging, it's been a while since I've even heard that question or that discussion. It has come up recently by the Fargo Forum, and I'll just tell you what I told them. There's nothing's been offered up to rationalize that merge. There's an economy of scale that someone on the editorial board there perceives, but it doesn't hold up to scrutiny. West Fargo Schools do collaborate, however, with Fargo. Not just with Fargo Schools, but also with Northern CAS. A few examples of that are the Metro Administrators, which is a professional development coordination or collaboration. There's CTE Facility. We share a director, Denise Jonas, who we all probably know, with Fargo and Northern CAS. LRED setting that we're discussing for behavioral health has been working with Southeast Educational Cooperative, as well as Fargo Schools, and there are other schools interested in that. Also, Indian Education, that is also a shared collaboration with Fargo Schools. And there's, of course, again, back to the emergency response, the entire county. So there are many levels at which West Fargo Schools and other schools collaborate with each other on a daily basis. I'm pretty certain that also the WFPA and the FPA collaborate in some ways as well. However, I can't really speak to that directly. That's just an assumption.
Alan?
Collaboration between West Fargo and Fargo. You know, there are many things that both districts collaborate on. But one thing that has been newsworthy most recently was the Level D facility, which I think both districts recognize a need for it. But the consensus was, we need to slow down a little bit. So that's notable collaboration between the two districts. Could there be another bond referendum? Remember, we're all talking about the education of our children and providing them the best opportunity for their education. When Cheyenne was converted from a ninth grade center to a high school, we provided more opportunities for students to participate in not only extracurricular activities. You know, sports was one thing, but arts and music are another area that we provided additional opportunities for. And I think the third high school will provide more opportunity also for children in the district. City reassessing our property, well, I think from the city standpoint is probably a necessary evil. But I'll admit that our business manager has done so much to try and keep the school levy to a minimum without raising the mill levy over the past few years.
Kara?
I agree about collaboration with West Fargo and Fargo. I think Jeff did a great job of listing out a lot of the examples of the ways that we do that and continue to explore that. I think that's just a great idea. Our administration has been really supportive of that, and so I applaud those efforts. In terms of merging with Fargo Public Schools, I don't think that's a good idea. You're talking about Fargo Schools, which has an enrollment of about 11,000, and we have an enrollment of 10,500. So that would be an incredibly large school district. And in terms of the potential to save costs on administration, I don't see that that would actually even happen because you would have to increase the amount of administration you have. Right now, we have an assistant superintendent who oversees as soon as, we just broke ground on our 15th elementary school. So you're going to increase your administration anyway, and so you're not actually going to save funding on that. And others have pointed out, we have an identity that works for Fargo Schools and works for West Fargo. Yes, I support a bond referendum. I think that a bond referendum is inevitable, given what we've talked about in terms of our growth. In terms of assessments, I think when Shelley was talking about it, I kept thinking there's, what, there's two certainties, death and taxes. We'll be paying taxes. Al pointed out that our mill levy has actually, our mill levy has gone down. So the percentage of your, the percentage of taxes based on the value of your home has actually gone down through retired debt.
John?
Get that mic on. A lot has been said kind of all the way through. But collaboration, I think that the West Fargo School Board and the administration have been very collaborative with many, and Jeff listed them. Couple others that I'd like to just add is, of course, we have collaborated with West Fargo City. We have collaborated with the different park boards, Fargo and West Fargo. So certainly, collaboration wherever we can and try to, you know, improve the whole community. I think that's a great thing. And, you know, collaborating with Fargo, if we can do it on a Level D, that would be wonderful. And to be able to come up one building, maybe, you know, they have one and we don't, an extra building, that would be great. I do think the other CTE, some of the different career tech, I think that would be a great way to be able to collaborate, where you just maybe don't have the total number of students, but yet we can still offer it between the districts. I don't see it combining. I don't see the benefit of combining because I think we all like our own entity that's been said. We all like that West Fargo, that small-town feel. I think we want to kind of keep that. And so I guess I would not be for combining the districts. Bond referendum, I'm definitely for it. I think the opportunity is the biggest thing. That was one of the main goals when we opened Cheyenne and expanded that, to expand the opportunity for our kids. And really, that's why we're here. We're here for the kids, and what we can do is provide the best opportunity there. And then reassessing the, I've got to stop, but I'll say reassessing is taxes. I'll just go with that.
We are down to our last question. We have lots of choices here, but mental health has been brought up numerous times, so I'm going to choose that type of question and just ask you, starting with Barry. What is, what was your goal on, or idea on, mental health issues? And does that include addressing such areas as academic pressures, bullying in all its forms, particularly those students who are LGBTQ, who are often the target of bullying? Or is it more about a safety issue for you?
How do I back to a minute?
Yeah, I'm going to have to go back to a minute.
I think we need to ensure what we do is necessary to protect everyone, to provide a safe environment for all our students. And I do believe that bullying plays a part of mental health. And there's front, we need to give the frontline staff the tools that they need and the sports staff to deal with these issues promptly and reporting abuses that they see immediately. I think bullying is a very big part. I think mental health issues and the other issues you brought up, transgender and things like that. But I think a lot of that starts at home, once again. The parents nowadays need to teach their children right or wrong, what's acceptable, what's not acceptable. And then they need to carry that out. The teachers and the frontline staff and the administration should not have to do that now. Some people have behavioral issues that you just need to deal with. And then we deal with those separate. And at school that they thought about combining, I think that was a great idea. The problem with that, once again, lack of transparency. Until it came out in the public, it was a good thing. But once the public found out, and they didn't hear about it, they didn't have their input, then all of a sudden, they take a step back. That's a problem. We need transparency up front, not back door. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim?
Yeah, the youth, the North Dakota Youth Survey, North Dakota Youth at Risk Survey, a quarter of students feel some form of mental disorder. In their survey, they filled that out about, so about a quarter of our students are, they believe struggling with some disorder. And only about 8% of them received some form of help. So as a school now, we need to provide the adequate resources, counselors, social workers, psychologists. Until we start thinking of mental health in the way that we think of physical health, we're going to have a problem with children and adults. So our schools are at the forefront of trying to help these kids with their problems, whether it be, what we have now is an explosion of anxiety, anxiety and depression amongst the kids. It's brought on by social media. I think it's 64% of kids, like I said, have been bullied at one time. Only like 19, I think 19, I shouldn't say only, 19%, or so are physically abused. And all kids matter, whether it's transgender, gender, or ELL, or whoever. We can't allow that at our schools.
Matur?
The school environment must support the mental well-being of every student. Mental well-being affects academic success and the well-being of our community. The district should work with the local mental health facilities and other organizations to tackle and find a way to help these children in school and out of school. And we need to have time with the student, with teachers that are working with those students that need help or with mental health. So the schools should work with them because they are our children, and we must support them, and we must make them feel welcome as part of our community. And to do that, we have to limit to like how many teachers will be dealing with the children with mental health. Just a few numbers. Thank you.
Shelley?
I believe the district has a role to ensure that the students have facilities, personnel, and are allowed to have communication regarding mental health. We need to make sure that the students aren't afraid to speak up if they are having problems, or if they know that there is a friend of theirs or another student that is having problems. They need to bring it out. It should all start and stem from home because the parents should be giving the student their values and how they should be respecting others, respecting adults, respecting other people, not just believing that they're the only ones and that they're entitled to everything. That is one of the major problems we have nowadays, is the entitlement. That's where our mental health comes from. Because the student believes they're entitled to do this, they're entitled to have behavioral problems, and nobody's going to stop them. We need to have the parents start and go from there, and then have other people communicate to let them know if there is a problem and so that we don't have another Columbine or a new shooting because there isn't communication when people have known that there was something going on. Thank you.
Summer?
I think we need to make sure our staff and our teachers have all the tools and resources that they need to be able to find when children are struggling. But that also needs to go back home. Because if you see a child struggling at home, their parents might not see that. And have, making sure that their parents also know what resources are available in the community because they might not. They might not know that that's something that can be, something that they could look at. It also needs, we need to be educating our children, looking at LGBTQ youth, looking at the diversity within our school districts. People are different. That is just a fact of life. And living in North Dakota, we don't see as much diversity as some other states do, but we're starting to get there. And we need to bring that out because North Dakota has been very much a very white Republican state, and it is not like that anymore. And we need to make sure that these children understand that just because you are lesbian, trans, bye, you're not white. That is okay, and you need to not pick on somebody just because of that. Bullying has become a huge deal in our schools, and it's not okay. And we need to not stand up for it, or we need to stand up for it and stand up for the kids that are getting picked on.
Jeff?
Could you repeat the question? I just want to make sure, because I've been all over the place in my head here, so I just want to make sure I'm answering.
I was basically asking you about how you think this school should handle mental health issues ranging from academic pressure to the wide variety of ones that are facing today.
Thank you. Jim mentioned the 25% students, based on that, on that study. I'll expand on that and say that 20% to 25% of the folks in this room are struggling with some sort of mental health issue, whether it's anxiety, whether it's depression, whether it's, name it. It's such a broad spectrum, so we often are taking the term behavioral health and looking at it as one thing, and it is many, many, many things. And the first thing that I want to see, again, is I want teachers to know some triggers or some signals, something. But I don't think it's fair for us to expect to give them enough tools that they become the experts on it in the schools. And that's where we need support. We need funding from the state of North Dakota, which is woefully behind compared to some of our neighbors offering that up. They need to make, help us to make it easier to get support staff in the schools who are specialists in this, behavioral interventionists and things like that. It's extremely important to get the additional funding.
Thank you. Alan?
I think one of our biggest challenges is mental health and behavior issues. And I'm just going to digress a little bit. You know, when I was in middle school and high school a couple of years ago, there wasn't such a thing as an SRO in our schools. And now our public education, middle schools and high schools have SROs in them. And I'm also amazed at the fact that the church that I attend regularly has an SRO from 8:00 Sunday morning till noon. What has our society become? Our demographics in the district are certainly different. We have over 40 different languages in the district that our staff, our teachers, our faculty have to contend with on a day-to-day basis. And I hope that we will not become complacent thinking that because we're in North Dakota, this won't happen in my backyard. I think there are a lot of school districts out there that looked at the fact that it's not when, it's not if it's going to happen, it's when it's going to happen.
Kara?
I have a lot of concerns about mental health, and I think that it's important to recognize that this is a community issue. Schools are a part of the community. They can be a part of the solution or a part of the way of addressing these problems, but it can't, it can't be just the schools. That's a lot of burden to place on our teachers, who are also trying to teach all the other stuff that they're trying to do. But I think, you know, yes, parents play a role in that. But I know when I had my children, I received no owner's manuals for them. And so you learn as you go. And if you don't have the skills or you don't have the ability to do that, I do think that schools can play a part in that. I agree with Jeff. I think we need a lot more resources put into mental health. It includes resources for drug addiction and providing wraparound services. I wanted to point out one piece about the LGBTQ students. As a particularly vulnerable population, we know that a much higher percentage of LGBTQ youth attempt and complete suicide and are also homeless. I know we have LGBT youth in this community who are homeless. And they're still, they're students that we need to serve. And on top of helping them with their mental health needs, we need to help them be academically successful as well.
John?
I was stuck for a moment. I think mental health is such a huge issue, and there are so many ways to be able to look at it. I think the biggest thing is it's a community effort. It is not just the teachers, or the parents, or the counselors. It's all of us working together to be able to manage that. And I think there's so many different levels. I think that's kind of been alluded to, where, you know, we all could have a little bit different mental health, whether it's anxiety, or, you know, it all depends on how you handle the different, or depression. And now take that, that same feeling that we have that we're able to manage and throw at a middle schooler who's got many different things going, or a high schooler. And to be able to have the resources and the training, it'd be tough to have everybody as experts. It would be nice to be able to have additional resources in the schools to be able, whether it be additional counselors, maybe additional RSOs, because you can, you know, supporting the mental health along with, you know, supporting some of the social media, the bullying, the different things. And social media isn't bad itself, but it is really amazing on how much of that gets into bullying. And I got to stop, so I'll...
Jessica?
Okay. As far as how I would handle the student behavior and the student mental health issues, I'm absolutely in agreement that this is a community issue. And of course, we need to give our teachers and our staff the tools and the resources that they need. But what is the issue? You know, this isn't the West Fargo of 1985, when I was in kindergarten and first grade. Unfortunately, it's changed so much. We want to keep our community as one, that close-knit community, but it has changed. And I would facilitate the discussion between... And I would facilitate the discussion between teachers, staff, administration, the board, um, parents, and create almost a task force, so to speak, or strategic plan to address the fundamental issues of why we would bring in all of these resources in the first place.
Thank you. Now we'll move to one-minute closing statements and we begin with Jim.
Well, thank you for the opportunity. I'd like the opportunity alongside some of you guys to work for our students. Like I said, I'm an advocate for students and that is all the education they can get, great educational experience, to work to provide the resources they need. And I want to be an advocate for teachers. I know how hard they work. And the compensation, we need to improve that. Uh, our teachers are dedicated, hardworking, our classified staff, our cooks, our bus drivers are fantastic people. Uh, just to see them interact with kids is fantastic. Uh, so we need to appreciate them. And I look forward to the opportunity. I will bring a new energy to the board if I can, uh, and community kids. My whole life has been education. And thank you, Larry.
Thank you. Matur.
Thank you for having me here tonight. If I get a chance to be elected, I will ensh- I will ensure that all students have what they need to learn, all families feel engaged in their children's education, all the teachers and staff have what they need to teach and support every student. This campaign has given me the opportunity to meet the families, teachers, the students, and taxpayers that I hope to represent as their board member. My conversation with hundreds of people while door knocking at, at school and community events, I learn about the consent and the commitment of Fargo, of West Fargo stakeholders. As a board member, I will continue to listen to students, teachers, parents, the staff, and community members and consider them in every decision I make as a board member. If I get elected, I will be a great asset to the community, to the West Fargo School Board, and we will make West Fargo School District a better school for all our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Shelley.
Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm a strong believer in public, public education. It gives all, all an equal chance to succeed. My children, Michael and Matthew, both attend public school and so I have a very big interest and a personal interest in this. I decided to run for the West Fargo School Board in order to use my knowledge and experience in assisting in necessary spending to assist in eliminating overcrowding and assist and strive to make our school lunches nutritious as well as appetizing. We are in the twenty-first century and have to ensure that our children have the skills and knowledge to compete in the global market. This will happen if our parents, students, educators, community and business members work together to make the change that will enable them to become knowledgeable, confident, successful individuals. We have to, we have work to do. World-class, uh, world-class education requires innovation and initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Summer.
Thank you so much for having me tonight. Um, as a school board member, I would look forward to creating a West Fargo School District and Community Partnership and making sure that our students want to stay here as they get older and have their children go through the same school district that they did when they grew up. Um, I would want to make sure that we have a great open line of communication between our staff, our teachers, our parents, our students, to make sure that all their needs are met. And if there is any gaps, figure out where these gaps are. Um, making sure that we look at every aspect of people, of the children's education, whether it just be the education themselves, athletics, their mental health, what do they need from the school district to be able to thrive when they grow older. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff.
Thanks for having us tonight. I appreciate it. This is actually something I look forward to when it happens, so just call me strange. I don't know, but I do enjoy these. I'm just gonna ask for everybody's support to get me back on the board. I want to get back on there. I want to continue some of the work, the collaboration that was done in the past. I'm not afraid of the hard questions. I mean, for the long haul, I think my experience shows that. Uh, if you liked what you got before, you're gonna get the same guy. If you didn't, well, I know how you're voting, but that's fine. Thank you very much.
Alan.
I would like to echo the, uh, thank yous from my fellow collaborators up here running for the school board. I, uh, had four children that went through public education and their goals going through public education are the same as my goals today. The kids come first, alright? And I do have seven grandchildren going through public education and I stay in touch with them on how they're doing in school, what's happening in the school. And, uh, I'm just gonna brag a little bit. I have a ninth-grade granddaughter that went through American Sign Language class this year. And her final exam was Monday. And she had to sign the lyrics of a song without any notes. So our kids come first, my grandkids come first also, and what they're doing in school is amazing.
Thank you. Kara.
Uh, thanks to the League of Women Voters for supporting or for hosting this event and the City of West Fargo for letting us use their awesome space. Um, I'd also like to thank the voters who elected me in two thousand fourteen and I would hope that they would continue to support me in this election. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to serve the community and the school district with bringing my experience and my educational background. I come from a family of educators. My grandparents were educators. My parents were educators. Um, I, I couldn't hack the K-12 system. I, I adore teachers who can, but I don't understand kids at that age as well as at the college level, which is where I landed. Um, my focus is on, um, children's educational outcomes and making sure that we are supporting them, supporting all students, supporting our diverse students, um, and especially supporting students who might be struggling a little bit, um, in their, uh, in their courses. And I think the more we can do to help them, the better, preparing them for the next step, whether that's the military, career, or college, and, um, supporting teachers and staff. Thank you.
Thank you. John.
Again, I'd like to thank everybody for supporting this venue and it's certainly a great venue to be able to express our thoughts as we kind of go it. Um, just want to kind of reiterate, you know, the one mission that, and I think it goes along with the district mission along with, uh, I've become very passionate about it is, you know, we are here to serve kids. And, uh, serve kids and create results. And as we kind of can, and of course, in creating results, we are educating, you know, students for tomorrow's world. And, and a lot of times those jobs that we're trying to train them for, we don't even know what they are. So it's really to be able to kind of think out the box and, and be able to kind of work on that. And then to do that, of course, looking at the different goals, as I mentioned, you know, make sure that those students are engaged and empowered. Um, you know, I would definitely like to support and continue to support the administration and the teachers. Uh, I've made a lot of great friends as we've kind of worked through that and certainly on the different committees. And I think we can continue to do that. And to be able to do that, I think the main goal would be to really follow our example. Um, we tell the kids they gotta learn the four Cs and I think if we do that, we'd be able to do that. And of course, those four Cs are communication, which has certainly been said a number of different times, collaborate, critical thinking, and creativity. And that'll stop.
Thank you. Jessica.
Alright, so again, thanks for the opportunity to be up here. Um, decisions must be made to accommodate growth and subsequently maintain fiscal responsibility with basically keeping our focus on the kids. That's never changed. That will never change. Students are our number one focus. Uh, we need to continue to support our teachers and staff with the ultimate goal of student achievement, growth, and development. The Public School District does have a fundamental responsibility to, to teach our children and equip, equip them with the skills that they need for those twenty-first century skills that John mentioned. I believe in this community, our educational system, and I hope to be an integral part of the board going forward, bringing my past experience and educational background to the board.
And Barry.
Hi everyone for showing up and allowing me the opportunity to express some of my ideas. I do agree, students are first. But I think the way the board is currently doing it, I think it's time for a change. I think it's time for new ideas. You heard up here, money, 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 build, 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 fund, fund, fund. Yes, we need those things, but we can do it better. We can do it responsible. We can do it wiser. My goal would be to include everybody. If somebody has an idea, allow new people on committees, allow new people's ideas. Don't always come up with the same people, same ideas. You get the same results. So my thought is I would be open to everybody, responsive to everybody. You may not agree with me, I may not agree with you, but your ideas are just as vital as everybody else's. You know, the thing that always gets me about the school board, if you ever notice, every decision is unanimous. Now, how many of you know seven people that can agree a hundred percent of the time on a hundred percent of everything? That's where our current board is. I think it's time for a change, new leadership, new ideas, and new blood. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, thanks to everyone in the audience for your participation and your attendance. Thanks to all the volunteers at the League of Women Voters. Uh, we are going to take a little bit of a break. Everybody hit the, uh, lovely goodies that the City of West Fargo has provided for us as we get changed over into the next forum. And let us all end by thanking all of these great people for being candidates.
Welcome to the League of Women Voters Candidate Forum for the City of West Fargo City Commission Candidates. And thank you, candidates, and thank you, audience, for attending. Also, thank you to the City of West Fargo for hosting us today. And this forum is being recorded and it will be rebroadcast later and also we should have it available on YouTube or for sharing and accessible as well. Um, just a reminder that this election will be on June twelfth and there will be early voting from June fourth to June eighth. So the format for today is we will start with a two-minute introduction from each candidate. Then we will have questions from the audience with two minutes for each question per candidate for answering. And then we will wrap this up with a one-minute, um, conclusion from each candidate. And all of the questions are from the audience. And so I'd like to remind the audience, if you do have a question now or anytime during the forum, we do have cards and pens available. Um, if you would like to write your question and then give it to one of the League volunteers, they will get it up here so we can ask those questions. Um, just, the League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages informed and active participation in government and works to increase understanding of major public policy issues. And so we do things like these Twitter forums and then First Fridays. And so I encourage everyone to follow the League of Women Voters of the Red River Valley for more of our events, um, and for upcoming candidate forums. And so to get started, we will start with introductions from the candidates. We will start with Eric Jurdevig, um, and then we will move through. And then for the questions, we will start with Duane and move through as well. Um, so Eric, if you would like to get started with your, with your opening statement.
Absolutely. Thank you. First off, I would like to just thank all of you for being here tonight. It's, I know it's really gorgeous outside, so you're all giving up a great evening to, to be here and to listen to us talk. Uh, I'd also like to thank the League of Women Voters for, for hosting this event. Uh, as you know, my name is Eric Jurdevig and I'm running for West Fargo City Commission. I've, I've lived in West Fargo my whole life. I graduated from West Fargo High School in the class of ninety-three. I have a business degree from Morehead State, uh, or MSUM, I guess is the more accurate description, and an MBA from the University of North Dakota. I have spent the first twenty years of my professional career in the technology industry. Started at Great Plains Software in the spring of ninety-eight. Uh, was there and then at Microsoft up until two thousand five, when I left with a good friend of mine to start a technology consulting business called Summit Group Software. I had the honor to lead that business as the president of the company for the, for the last thirteen years, uh, the last eight of which we were headquartered right here in West Fargo. I'm married. My wife Sarah and I have two kids, a daughter that's at M State and a second grader at Eastwood Elementary. Uh, just a few of the things that are kind of important to me, uh, as to, you know, maybe why I'm running for commission. Uh, you know, affordable housing, which in my mind is inclusive of things like special assessments, property tax. Uh, transparent government, uh, is another one. And then, you know, I'm very interested in how West Fargo grows more strategically over the next decade and what impact that growth can have on, on taxes, special assessments, and other amenities within our city. So with that, again, I'll thank you and...
Thank you. And we'll move to Duane Hanson for your opening statement.
Good evening, everyone. And there again, thank you, everybody, for being here to do this. Uh, my name is Duane Hanson. My wife Betty and I moved, moved here with our two daughters who were young at the time in nineteen eighty-nine. Um, we, um, I started my, my career in public service in nineteen ninety-nine when, uh, Jolene San walked across my street and asked me if I thought about running for school board. And I did, and here we are nineteen years later, just about. Um, I, um, we have two daughters, both grown, both married. We have five grandchildren. Um, I've been a, each of Omaha Financial Advisor for the last thirty-one years. Um, I enjoy doing this. I'm, um, I was not gonna run for this net last term, but then I decided I wanted to continue my work. There's some projects I'd like to see finished, um, including, uh, our hookup with Fargo for sewage, the decommissioning of the lagoons, um, some other things that are going on. And there again, the continued growth in this community and to make sure that, try to continue the work that we've been doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Brad Olson, your opening statement.
Thank you for having us tonight. Uh, like Eric said, it's a gorgeous night and I'd rather be out there right now enjoying the evening. Cause we don't get many of these with, with, uh, very little wind, but I do, do thank you for, for attending here tonight. Uh, my name is Brad Olson. I moved to West Fargo in two thousand six. Uh, my career with the Farm Service Agency brought me here. Uh, I was in Bowbells, North Dakota before that, uh, working for the Farm Service Agency. I have a thirty-five-year career with the federal government. That's where my, where I started my public service. But I was also elected to the City Commission in Bowbells and served on that for twelve years. And I've still got the desire to be part of that type of, uh, service to the community. Uh, my wife wonders why I want to do this and it's just part of me that wants to give more. Uh, we've adopted the city. My daughter graduated from West Fargo High in two thousand fifteen. She is currently a senior at NDSU. And I have a son that works, uh, lives here in West Fargo too. So, thank you.
Thank you. And for the first question, we will start with Duane. And that, I'm gonna kind of combine a couple that we've been getting. And that is, what do you view as the largest issue facing West Fargo? And there's a couple of these. One is specified for the next ten years, but in general, what do you think is the largest issue that is facing West Fargo?
We have a lot of issues that are, that are facing us, but one that doesn't get talked about a lot probably is, is gonna be, um, our aging infrastructure and how we're going to repair that and how we're gonna find a way to pay for all that so that it, uh, so it makes it fair for a boy living in that part of the country. It, um, that's gonna be a really big issue for us. We're, we're starting on it. We've got a study going on right now where we're studying pretty much all our water and sewer lines to see where the weaknesses, where the strengths are, so that we can make a plan, a master plan going forward and so we can let people know when we're getting ready to come into the neighborhood and try to repair all these things. We've, just, just the other day, or just, um, there is a downtown, our downtown area where they're, where we're putting up additional buildings. We've, we've got bad, we've got bad sewer lines and, and bad lines actually going into people's homes. And they were going to, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna go out and go for a bid on that and we decided to back off on that a little bit to try to have a plan in place. Um, and so that we can figure out how to do this the right way. And, um, that's, that I really think is gonna be one of our, our biggest struggles going forward over the next ten years.
Thank you. And Brad.
I agree with Duane with, uh, the infrastructure is gonna be a big struggle, but along with that is to our continued growth. Uh, if the Fargo-Morehead diversion comes in, that'll help us determine how we can grow. If it doesn't come in, we're pretty much landlocked where we, how we can grow and how we, um, use our, our current city size efficiently and still maintain growth. Uh, with the decommission of the city lagoons, I mean, there's the potential there, but what do you put on top of four hundred and sixty acres of, of, uh, sludge? And, you know, I know it's all gonna be cleaned up, but still, what do you do with that? So that's gonna be another big issue. What do we do with all of that land there? Along with that is the, um, the corridors going north and south, east and west. We're, we're limited because of I-94 cuts us in half. How we can get people across the interstate to and from work and to our shopping areas, things like that. We need to make things more, uh, efficient during the rush hour periods and, uh, different things like that need to be looked at in a large scale.
Thank you. And Eric. And Eric?
You know, I think growth certainly will probably be the largest issue over the next 10 years, so I think it...
I forgot to turn on my microphone. Sorry. Uh, growth is really going to be one of the biggest issues that we have over the next 10 years, but I think, to me, it's how we grow. You know, one of the things I feel like as a city we need to start making a slight change in is, is where we get our revenue from. So the more we can, you know, attract businesses and commercial development into parts of West Fargo, the more we can drive our sales tax revenue and commercial property tax revenue versus putting it, you know, so largely on the back of our residential property taxes. So to me, uh, you know, growth is definitely it. I, I agree that it's going to stress out and we've already stressed out our infrastructure and there's a lot to be done there, but, um, you know, it's hard to prioritize those two. I mean, they're, they're both very big issues.
Thank you. And for the next question, we will start with Brad. And that is concerning, um, flood control and the diversion project. And so what is your position on the diversion project, um, the current proposal and who should pay for the project?
Well, I'm all in favor of flood control. Uh, it, I would hate to see something like what happened in Grand Forks happen to the FM greater area. There are many different options that you could have used. Uh, I hate to see all the farmland being used up for the once in 50-year type flood that we had back in 1997. And working back and forth with all of the different players, uh, it probably was one of the better ideas that everybody could agree on. I'm, I'm in favor of the diversion as far as who would pay for it. Um, I, I think there should be a larger share of that being paid on the people who is going to protect the most, and I think that would be the Fargo-Morehead area, you know, the, those two cities as it's going to protect them. We already have our diversion here, but we're, we're pretty well protected from any major floods. So I would think that the citizens of Fargo and Morehead who is going to protect the most should have to pay the most.
Thank you. Eric?
I'm a, I'm a firm supporter of the FM diversion, although I will openly admit that, you know, it should probably scare us all just a little bit, you know, a two, any $2.4 billion project should. Uh, and, you know, but it protects and, or would protect some of the core infrastructure that West Fargo is now counting on. You know, the West Fargo, you know, West Fargo depends on Fargo for our water and soon we're going to depend on Fargo for, for our sanitary sewer system. And protecting that core infrastructure is absolutely vital. Uh, additionally, a lot of West Fargo residents work in Fargo and, you know, the economics of our two cities are, are tightly woven together. So to me, the FM diversion is, you know, certainly a little bit scary. And it's kind of like sitting up here tonight, talking to all of you, it's something that we have to do. But it certainly, you know, should, should probably scare us a little bit too.
Thank you. And Dwayne?
Um, I'm a, I'm a big believer in, in flood control for the metro area. Do I wish there was a better way to do it than the, than the diversion project? Absolutely. Do I, do I wish that West Fargo was getting more of a benefit out of it? Absolutely. Um, but it, look how critical our diversion was for us. I mean, this community wouldn't be where we're at today without that. Um, you know, with that said, um, I, there again, hopefully they can figure out an equitable way to make that fair to everybody when it comes to the payment part. And I agree with Eric, any 2.4 or whatever it's going to be when they all get done, billion dollar project should, should be scary to all of us. Um, but we need to have it because he's right. Our, our, we have people that work over there, we have people that work over here. We're integrally tied together that way and if Fargo goes under, we might as, we'll all go under also. I mean, it's not a good thing.
Thank you. And for our next question, we will start with Eric. And that is, should West Fargo seek a downtown revitalization similar to what Fargo has done? Should other areas be developed to bring an identity to West Fargo? Identity is in quotes.
Yeah, I, I think what we've done so far, uh, with, with some of the projects on Cheyenne Street has, has certainly brought, um, you know, more activity and, or I think it will bring more activity down and, you know, into downtown West Fargo. So I, I certainly support that. I, you know, am apprehensive to over incentivize, uh, some of the projects. So to me, you know, if, if, if we're having to put a 10 or 13 year, some, you know, incentive behind some of those things, I, I question the legitimacy of a project that, that needs that much financial support in order to pull it off and, and whether that's the right thing to do. So that's the only, uh, issue I have with kind of what we've done so far and, and how we move forward is whether those incentives really need to be quite as substantial as they are.
Thank you. Dwayne?
I think it's pretty exciting that when you, when you drive down Cheyenne Street, what's going on down there and what's going to be going on down there. Um, our commission meeting the other night, Matt Marshall did an up, did a kind of an upgrade for us on that and let us know what's going on with the additional buildings that are going to be happening down there. And it is, it is going to change the way our downtown is. Should, should we try to do something that Fargo's doing? I, I don't, I don't necessarily think so. I mean, I think we should do what's good for West Fargo, not necessarily what Fargo does. Um, so there again, hopefully we've got good people working on that. We've got a, we've got a good developer that did these things in the past, they're experienced. Um, hopefully it'll all work out and I think it'll change our downtown area for years to come.
Thank you. And Brad?
I agree with Dwayne and we don't need to, you know, mimic what Fargo's doing with their downtown. We, we have, we really don't have a downtown. We're trying to create one. Um, we're revitalizing it right now with what's being developed on the north end of Cheyenne Street. And there's a little, uh, little downtown area trying to be built down south of Interstate along 32nd Avenue with the, with the new structure there by the hockey arena. And I'm really looking forward to seeing that, uh, come forth and have all kinds of different venues, um, art events, uh, concerts, uh, different things like that to be brought to that part of the town too. So I think that's a, a positive and we're, we're making great strides in that.
Thank you. For our next question, we will start with Dwayne. And that is, how do you feel about the city building a new library, including a community center?
Um, for, for a little over three years, I was liaison on the library board, um, from the city. Um, there was a lot of talk at that time when I was there about, about building a new library and they, they had had a consultant in and did a study. A consultant recommended, which many consultants do, that, you know, we build a new library. Um, I'm all for building, buildings in this community if they make sense and we can get some use out of them. Now, you know, do, and Janice is not here, but, um, if we can find a good spot for that and she's not happy with where she's at, um, someplace that's centralized and with good, you know, transportation availability and things like that, with a community center attached to that or all-in-one that we could maybe even use for some of our seniors and groups like that, I'm all for that, one kind, if this, if the community supports that. Um, in the past, they typically haven't, but we'll see what happens. I mean, gotta throw it out there and see what I want to, what they want to do.
Thank you. And Brad?
I sat in on one of those consulting meetings, uh, two years ago and found it quite interesting of the interest that there is in the library. Um, I'm not one to go to the library. My job makes me work or read every hour of the day and I get tired of reading. So I, that's the last place I would go, would be the library. But it, it's functional, it's needed. It's a different type of library today than it was in the past. It isn't just books. It's, it's all sorts of media, it's computers, it's learning that way. And, uh, there's a lot of people out there that don't have that available. So I think we need to, you know, upgrade our library and, and I agree with Dwayne, it needs to be in a central location with good transportation. And I, I'm all for that if the community's behind it too.
Thank you. And Eric?
I'm certainly a big believer in our, in our library and, and would support, um, investments or, or in the, um, building of a new library. On, on the community centerpiece, you know, one of the things I would, and Dwayne kind of hit a, hit on it with his comment about, you know, being used for seniors. To me, I would rather have it more of a senior center, something that was dedicated, um, to the seniors within our community, I think would be, um, a stronger, uh, outcome than, than just having that be an afterthought with some of the facilities that we already have within our city.
Thank you. And so for the next question, we will start with Brad. And that is, has there been any thoughts to getting our, our own engineering department? And is the City of West Fargo being truly served by Moore?
So the question is, has there been any thoughts of getting our own, uh, city engineer?
Or what are your thoughts on?
What are my, what are my thoughts?
West Fargo getting their own engineering department?
I believe we should get our own engineer, um, and I believe that's in the works. I'm not positive, but I had heard rumors that that was a possibility that we were looking at, that would, uh, would happen. So I'm all in favor of that. It, it would remove the, um, appearance of a conflict of interest. Uh, working for the federal government for 35 years, you have to remove all appearances of conflict of interest. And I realize that when we started using, uh, more engineering, we were probably a lot smaller town. When I were, uh, was on the City Commission for Bowbells, we couldn't fund a city engineer. So we relied on a, another, you know, entity to do that. And, but we're, we're a large city now. We're one of the top 10 population cities. We should have our own engineer here that looks over it. So I would support having our own engineer.
Thank you. And Eric?
The City of West Fargo has had a great long-term relationship with Moore Engineering. Uh, that said, I, I certainly do believe that it's at a time in terms of our size and, and where we're at as a city, that, that we need to have, um, an internal engineering department or head of, you know, head of engineering within the, the city. Uh, I think that would help to, um, as Brad said, you know, alleviate any appearances of, um, as to there being sort of too strong of a relationship with Moore Engineering. And Moore is right here in West Fargo, uh, and that has made it easy. Although some of the other engineering firms in, in the, inside of Fargo, their owners live in West Fargo. So, you know, I, you know, I think it's important that we allow for strong competition with, with those other firms when we do need an outside firm.
Thank you. And Dwayne?
It's just not that easy just to hire another city and to put it, to hire a city employee and then the question is, what does his job do? What is his job description? And what is his MIT design just to, or to look over what Moore Engineering's doing or what, you know, what's his job? That is being looked at as far as, we've been talking about hiring city engineers since I got on City Commission. Um, but it has to make sense and it has to be for the right reasons, you guys. We do use outside firms. We're using ATS, uh, A2, uh, to us now to do our study for us and the water and sewer lines. Um, do we, do we probably need to go there at some point in time? Yes. But we need to make sure that we're going there for the right reasons.
Thank you. And for the next question, we will start with Eric. And that is, what do you see as the current commission's greatest weakness and how would your election alleviate that weakness?
It won't, uh, unfortunately. You know, I, I look at our current, um, mission and the weakness I would see within it is, is just the, the, a lack of diversity. Um, you know, I think we have some very strong female minority and young leaders. I guess I might be the youngest, so I suppose maybe in that regard, I, uh, it, it would. I say that jokingly. Um, but, you know, I, I feel like, you know, any city commission needs to be representative of the people that, uh, with, within that community. And, and so in, in my opinion, that would be, you know, a, a weakness that I hope long-term is other people step up within the community and run.
Thank you. And Dwayne?
That's a tough one. Um, excuse me. Um, can you answer this one? Okay. Um, what is the greatest weakness of the current city commission? I, I can't come up with any single thing that would say it was, it's a weak commission. Um, some people that I've talked with over the course of get, gathering names for my nomination petition, want the commission to be more proactive than reactive. And that can be said on, on anybody that makes, that sits in this spot and has to make a decision. Um, would me being elected to the commission make it, uh, re eliminate that, that weak spot? I, I don't know. Um, I would hope I could bring a, a different perspective. Um, I lived in a small town, less than 400 people for 17 years. Uh, I had that small-town feel, but I'm in a big city now and I have to adjust to that big city and I want to bring big ideas to the city. So hopefully I could bring a new perspective to the, to the commission.
Thank you. Next question?
I don't look at us as being weak at all, you guys. So we, there's five people on that commission that have respect for each other and work very well together. Do we always agree? We absolutely do not. Um, but at the end of the night, we walk out of here, we walk out of here and shake hands and, and, and we always try to make decisions that are in the best interest of the city. Um, it's not personal, it's, it's just business. Um, and so I don't look at us as having a weakness at all.
Thank you. And then the next question, we'll start with Dwayne. And that is, in an increasingly diverse community, how will you make sure it is welcoming for all?
Um, I think we just continue to do what we're doing. Um, I mean, West Fargo is, is, is available and wide open for anybody who wants to come here and we encourage anybody and everybody to come and live here. Um, there's only a certain amount of things that us in government can do. We can't solve all the world's problems one kind. So, I mean, I don't think anybody expects us to. Um, but I always encourage people to come here and, and, and live. I mean, when I moved here in 1989, um, this city was dramatically different. The school district was dramatically different. Um, they were thinking about closing Burger Elementary, and not Burger Elementary, Burger Pools. I remember saying to my wife, maybe we should move to Fargo. And we did not. But, and we stayed here because it's a, it's got a good feel. We came here from the small town, from Bowbells, by the way. And, um, and, uh, it's a, it's a great community to live in. So just come and experience it, you'll like it.
Thank you. And Brad?
I think we need to keep doing what we're doing too. Um, I, I have not participated in the, um, Bring Back the Night or whatever it is with the police department. I can't, I'm a loss of words for what it's actually called. But more events like that, more inclusion of, of everybody. Um, can the city commission on its own help out? Well, we can be the facilitator to work with the park districts and, and the library and others to, to make it more, more welcoming than it already is. I mean, we moved here in 2006 and we got involved with bowling leagues and I'm part of the hunter ed, uh, group that teaches hunter safety to 50-plus kids a year and, uh, different things like that. So it, it is a very welcoming community and I just think we've got to keep doing what we're doing.
Thank you. And Eric?
Um, you know, I would agree with, with both of the comments from, from Brad and Dwayne. You know, I think, uh, you know, it goes back to my prior answer. I mean, I would love to see, um, some, you know, strong female or minority candidates, for example, sitting right up here with us tonight. Uh, that said, uh, you know, that's an individual choice, so there's nothing we can do as a city commission to, you know, to, outside of just individual encouragement, um, to make that happen. I think maybe what, what, what we can do is to make, uh, to double down on our efforts to be very available, very engaged. Um, I, I will openly admit, I think we have that within our commission today. Uh, I, I sat down with multiple people off of our, our current city commission as I was considering, um, putting my name on the ballot and, uh, was impressed by their encouragement and, uh, the information they were willing to share and, and, and the help I feel like I've gotten from them. So, you know, I think more of that, being very available, being, you know, is, is important.
Thank you. The next question, I'm just going to kind of throw it to everyone to see if anyone knows offhand, um, but that is, we had the question of what is the total bond debt the city is carrying at present?
200-plus million.
Perfect. Thank you. Um, so we'll go with Brad for the next question. And that is, do you support paid firefighters or fire departments instead of mostly volunteers?
Instead of what?
Uh, mostly volunteers, was the question.
I, I support the full-time, uh, fire department, uh, to have that crew ready and available, you know, and always knowing it's there is just a peace of mind. Uh, it's also would be, uh, it's, I, I believe it's cheaper for our insurance to have that too. Uh, even though there are some larger cities like St. Paul and others that have volunteer, but I, I believe in, in the full-time fire department.
Thank you. Eric?
You know, West Fargo's had a strong history of our volunteer fire department, so, uh, you know, that's, that's been a great component of, of how we've gotten to where we're at. Uh, but given the size of the city we, we are, we absolutely need to, to continue the transition to more of a full-time force. You know, if we can move from, and I'm going to get the exact acronym wrong, but I, you get the exact acronym wrong, but, you know, from, we'll say level four to level three, and that's not quite the right language. You know, the, the combined residents of the city save, you know, somewhere pl, in, in excess of a million and a half dollars in insurance premiums. Uh, so, the investments we make there do, do have an impact back on us. And our current cost, uh, per resident for fire protection is a fraction of what it is in Fargo. So, I feel like, you know, we, we, we have a great fire department today. Um, we're getting great value for the dollars we're spending, and I think as we continue to grow that as a more full-time force, uh, we will, we'll continue to see savings on the insurance side versus what we're spending.
Thank you. Dwayne?
When we hired Chief Dan Fuller, um, a little while ago, he's, I mean, he came in here and made some pretty dramatic changes, one of them being the one that we're transitioning into, which is a partial full-time, partial still-volunteer type service. Um, does save us some money by doing it that way. It also takes a lot of pressure off of our volunteers. Um, the amount of calls that they're doing now is growing and growing every year by dramatic leaps. Um, the people that do the ISO tables, I think they're called, um, were in town in April, um, to review what we've been doing. I haven't, I don't know how long it takes to hear all that back, but they were hoping to drop us down dramatically from where we were at. So, I hope that's good, I hope that happens. Um, so, I, I think what we're doing right now is, is, is working very well, and we're getting good results in that, and hopefully we will continue to in the future.
Thank you. And I think as our final question, um, to wrap this up before eight-thirty, we will start with Eric. And that is, do you see the job of city commissioners, or do you think the job of city commissioners includes advocating for more support from the state legislatures? Why or why not? And if yes, what do you think West Fargo needs most from the state?
You know, the first half of your, of your question, yes. I, I think, um, you know, the various city governments and our state, uh, governments have, have a lot of ties between each other. And, and, and absolutely, I feel, as a, as a city commissioner, uh, you know, we need to have, you know, strong connections into our, um, local representatives, which, you know, one is here tonight, um, and, and, and other individuals within, within the state. In terms of what our biggest need is, um, you know, right now, I would, I would say it's property tax relief. Uh, you know, I, I was here for the school board, um, uh, candidate forum, and, you know, somebody made the comment about how mill rates have gone down. But if you ask the common, you know, the, the average citizen, their taxes have gone up. And, and, you know, that's, that's because property values have, have, have increased. But, you know, there's a lot of people struggling to pay property tax, and, and when you add a special assessment potential, potentially on top of that, it's, it's stressing out a fairly good percentage of our community. So, from, from my perspective, property tax relief is, is what we really need to see from Bismarck, um, to, to help us locally.
Thank you. And Dwayne?
I think it's critical that we have a working relationship with our legislators in Bismarck, and we continue to do that pretty much year-round. Um, we probably don't do enough of it as we, as we should, but I think it's critical that we, that we do that and continue to do that. It's, it's where the money's at, quite frankly. Um, and, and what are we looking for from them? Money, of course, for whatever, for a variety of reasons, whether it be water projects, and we're out there all the time for that, or, as Eric says, property tax relief or whatever. But I mean, it's, it's critical that we have a good working relationship with those folks.
Thank you. And Brad?
I don't know how I can top it, what you two said, 'cause I, I'm in agreement with, uh, um, working with our legislators, um, like Dwayne said, what do we need? We need money. And, uh, so we can lessen the burden on our taxpayers, uh, and just that working relationship, uh, to know where we're coming from and where they're coming from without just sitting back and complaining. It, it's real easy to sit back and complain about, well, we didn't get this, we didn't get that. And then if they say, well, what did you do? I said, I didn't do anything. So, we have to keep a working relationship with them, so that would be a priority.
Thank you. Now, we will go to closing statements from each candidate. And Dwayne, we'll start with you. And I did want to quickly mention, one of the questions that we did not get to is, um, what are your top three priorities? And so, if you do wanna touch on that in your closing statement, you have the option to, but I just wanted to let you know that that was one of the remaining questions, so for your closing statement.
Thank you. I just wanted to again thank the legal and voters for having us here tonight. Um, top three priorities. Uh, there again, real quick, infrastructure, um, getting, uh, lagoons, um, taken care of over time, and, uh, just trying to keep costs down, um, overall, quite frankly. I mean, services are expensive to, to bring. People expect them. Um, but that's our goal, is try to keep costs down, try to run this thing as lean as we possibly can, and actually have been for, for, since I've been here. Um, I just wanna thank all of you again. Um, I appreciate the opportunity. I've, I've appreciated all your support, uh, on the eight years I've been doing this. I look forward to your, and ask for your vote for another four, and thank you very much.
Thank you. And Brad?
Well, my three top priorities would be affordable housing, uh, for both the, the new homeowner, the, uh, persons coming in, elderly coming in for healthcare and different things like that. Um, special assessments, get a handle on those. It's the biggest topic there is right now. It's always in the paper, on the media, all, all kinds of media. And efficient use of our lands and, uh, and how we spend our money. Uh, we don't need all kinds of bells and whistles if we're really tight. Uh, it's nice to splurge a little bit, but to, to spend it wisely is, is the top priority, and be transparent with the city. If elected, I would like to hold, um, neighborhood meetings to hear from the, from the people what they feel the city needs to do and how we should do it. Um, no person has a, a silver bullet to fix all problems. That's why there's five members on the commission. Not one person can come up with, with the perfect idea, and then it goes forward. So, just working with the rest of the commissioners would be great.
Thank you. And Eric, your closing statement?
I will end where I started, thanking all of you for being here tonight. Uh, in terms of, uh, three top priorities, I, I guess I would go with affordable housing, managing our growth and infrastructure needs, um, as well as just, you know, clear and transparent government. Uh, you know, I, uh, would love to engage with more, with any of you that, that would, might have more questions. So, if you wanted to reach out to me, I have a Facebook site, uh, which is Eric Jurdavig for West Fargo. Uh, our website, which is jurdavig.com. You just have to be able to spell my last name, which is a little more challenging than these two guys. Um, but, uh, yes, I would ask for your vote on June twelfth. And thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for, candidates for being here tonight, and thank you to the audience for all of your wonderful questions. And remember to vote on June twelfth.